Ladies and gentlemen, we're ready to start our municipal city council meeting for Tuesday, December 18th, as to their one will stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for our invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. For gracious God, we come now in a sum as we know how, Lord, truly to say thank you for the many blessings that you bestowed upon each and every one of us. Thank you for life, health, and strength. Thank you for food, clothing, and shelter. Thank you for each one of the families that are assembled here. We pray your blessings upon them, oh Lord. Now, Lord, we pray a special blessing on those families who are hurting, who have lost loved ones through senseless violence, oh Lord. We don't understand these things, but we know you are still in control, and we honor you, oh Lord, and we pray that you will just comfort them right now. Now, as we go through this meeting, oh Lord, be with us, guide our tongue as we speak, and make decisions for the betterment of this city and your people. These are the blessings we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Alvin Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilor Striplin.
Here.
Councilor Wood.
Here.
Councilor Brown.
Here.
Councilor Starnes.
Here.
Councilor Chambliss.
Here.
Councilor Bowles.
Here.
Councilor Boone.
Here.
Character trait of the money is generosity, carefully managing my resources so I can freely give to those in need. It's a great character trait. Approve of the minutes from December 4th, as to we have a motion to approve those minutes. Have a motion, we have a second. A second, all in favor of approving the minutes of December 4th, signified by raising your right hand. Those minutes stand approved. At this time, we have comments from persons present regarding tonight's agenda on any agenda item. Mayor, you have a report?
Yes, sir. Just plan on keeping it short tonight. Started off with is that there's a possibility we might have a little technical difficulty with our video recording tonight, so it, we may have it put up on our city website. If not, it might be one that we just have to decide, we just don't have a video recording of it. But hopefully, we'll, might have that video technical difficulty taken care of. But the one thing I do want to talk about tonight on our agenda is ordinance number one. It's about a business licenses and taxes. I hope that you guys do move forward on that. That is something that will pretty much be looked at every five years by the state and will be adjusted necessary by them and not have to be dealt with by this political body here. So I do hope that you guys move forward on that tonight. The other thing is, is we are moving into the Christmas season, and one thing I do want to give a big thank you to the city workers that we have out here. The public safety departments, our police, and our fire department, they will, they will still be out there working on Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve, and want to say thank you for everything that they have done for this, for this city, for us individually, and also for all of us professionally, because they do make us look good. Our environmental services, our sanitation, our wastewater department. Our wastewater department, a portion of them will be working on those same holidays as our public safety departments are. They, they do provide a very valuable service that I think from time to time, the average citizen overlooks, but I think in our roles, I think we've really found that how very important that they are, not only to the community, but, but also as economic development also, because without them, we're not able to bring in the businesses that we are always looking for. Our sanitation department has also some very, very hard workers. I've got some emails yesterday and today about some of the good service that's been delivered by that, by that department, and I look forward to, to thank of them in the very near future. Also, we recently, we did have a public works appreciation luncheon, and I do plan on having some more appreciation luncheons for the other various departments as time does allow. But as I move right on down the line with all these various departments, we also then have our quality of life departments, which is our parks and wrecks, and our performing and creative arts. Those two departments help bring such a, the quality of life products programs that we're all looking for, and they are a very hardworking group there also. Then we have our general government, and you know, that's some that Kathy Dickerson, for example, over here, she works in very long, hard hours. Her, her department, finance department, HR. We also have our judicial department. And when I, I want to step back a little bit when I talk about the public safety. There's one group in, in that department that sometimes gets overlooked, and that's the civilian department, a portion of it, that handles the front desk there. Also, the, going back to the general government, we have our planning department. They have a very good department over there, some very dedicated employees over there, and they do work very hard for all of us that we, they're getting sometimes overlooked. I've talked about our planning. I talked, I forgot almost about our engineering. We've got our engineering without our street department included in there, all of our potholes, our street lights that would not be functioning, and also recently with all the rain that we had that came down just the other night. Without their dedication, there would have been some flooding here in Prattville, and I think the good Lord has blessed us to, to have all the hard workers that we have here and be able to, to weather the storms that have been thrown at us over the last two years or so. The, and I hope I'm not leaving any departments out. If I am, please, somebody help me out, because it, my list right here, I think I've got everybody covered here, which of course, we do have the executive office, and I've got some good, hardworking employees in it that help make us look good also. And we do also have our urban management, that without them, they have a lot of input out there that makes us look good. They, they sort of control our gateways, is have a lot of travelers come into town, whether they're business, pleasure, they do make us look good from, from that standpoint also. And there again, I just wanted to thank each and every one of them for what they have done for all, for me, for us, for the city, and they have, they have made, helped make Prattville Prattville. And on top of that also, it's, we actually have, City Prattville is very fortunate to have all the volunteers that we have, so we have a lot of committees that we have people sit on, and I'm not going to go through all of them, but I just really want to say thank you to all of them, and I guess some of that in mind is because of the recent tragedy that has been, that happened in Newtown, and I know we all have heard about that, and that has, had been on our mind, and whereas I feel like we are somewhat protected from that, because we are a very tight community. I think that we're a special community, and it's because of our people. With that, Mr. President, I'm going to say Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Mayor. Does anyone have any questions from there? Any comments? Thank you, Mayor, and if he left anybody out, we're just going to say thank you to all departments that will take care of that. This time, Mr. Moser, we come report on the status of city finances.
Provided a report to everyone at your seat there. The first page of the report, as always, is the revenue report. This is for the month of November. You will see that year-to-date, we've brought in $2.7 million. That's 8.38% of the budget for the 2012, 2013 fiscal year. You will notice on kind of to the far right-hand, that is $480,000 more than last year at this point, so off to a very good start. You also notice that we've brought in $50,000 more this month than we did last November, which is also very good. One thing of note, just because I've kind of harped on this in the past, lodging taxes, you'll notice it's like the fourth or fifth line down. For the first month in quite a while now, lodging taxes are up rather significantly, actually about $22,000 for the month, so that's very good, very good. The second sheet is the tax breakdown comparison for the month of November for the major tax sources. Again, you will notice lodging tax is, is up, $22,000. Use tax is up a significant amount this month. This is due to a use tax audit that was done, and so those taxes that were in arrears were paid this month. You also notice that restaurant taxes are significantly up as well. The third set is the expenses for the general fund, broken down by department. Most everything is pretty routine in this, in this month. Most everybody's in line where they should be as far as their budget is concerned. The next set you'll see is the sanitation and wastewater enterprise fund income statements. They also are right in line where they should be for the fiscal year. You will see they still are running in the black in both of them. And then the last sheet, as I presented last meeting, this is the bank balances as of October 30th, I'm sorry, November 30th, 2012, for each of the city's bank accounts.
Thank you, Ms. Moser. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Moser? Comments?
I have one.
Councilor Striplin.
Thank you. On the cash balances report.
Yes, sir.
At what point would we expect to see comparative data there? Are we going to have to wait a year, or is there a possibility?
If you would like for me to add that in, that's absolutely something I can add in very easily.
Thank you.
Councilor Bowles?
On the gas tax, do we have its, do we have its own bank account for that, or is it lumped in with everything else?
It's a separate bank account. That's, each, each one of those lines is a separate fiscal bank account.
Great. Thank you.
Councilor Chambliss?
Is there, is there any way that we can get this report to, prior to the meeting? Is it, I don't, looking at all this up here, I don't have time to look at it.
Right.
And really ask intelligent questions.
I actually put these together last night, so that's, it's kind of a last-minute thing just because we have, especially for the expense side, because we have to post expenses. They, you know, the expenses were incurred during the month of November, but we get them all during the month of December, and so they get posted, you know, in, for November, but we actually received the invoice in December, and that's the reason it's so late before we get these out. And as far as the revenues concerned, we have to close out, do bank reconciliations and everything else to post all the entries and stuff that would get us to where we need to be on the revenue side. As my department gets more caught up, you know, with, since we've kind of got staffing that we've added in there, it will make it a little easier for me to provide that information. But yeah, I mean, I can absolutely get it as, as soon as I can to everybody. But I mean, just because I presented tonight doesn't mean that, you know, this cuts off all questions that you can ask.
Certainly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowles. We have a report on council's special committees. Councilor Striplin.
Yes, sir.
Councilor Brown. Councilor Starnes.
Yes, sir.
Councilor Chambliss.
Yes, sir.
We've had three committee meetings, public safety, public relations, and judicial, and because several of us on those committees are fairly new, there's nothing that we're asking for any action. They're pretty much just an overview and orientation for us, and had a lot of good information, and looked at long-term plans and that sort of thing, and it's very, very educational. Thank you.
Council Bowles?
Yes, sir.
Councilor Boone?
Yes, sir. The leisure services department met on Friday, the 14th of December, and we talked a little bit about the splash pad location, which is a process which is ongoing, although it is being narrowed down substantially. We're getting a lot closer and moving forward with the splash pad right now. We are resurfacing the tennis courts over at Newton Park right now. They are going to be different colors, so it will be something worth going out and checking out in a couple of months. Things are going to look nice over there, and that project actually came in under budget, so I'm thrilled with Mr. Peterson for bidding that out and coming in with a real good price for us, saving the city a little bit of money there. We do continue to have a vacancy in staff at leisure services, so we would like to look at that first of the year. The mayor has introduced the idea of a surcharge for hotels that might go into leisure services for capital projects, so this is an item that we are going to be considering as a city and possibly taking action on as a council later on this year, and I'll get more information to you as the mayor fine-tunes this idea. And also, I'd like for you to take a look at ordinance number three. We are hoping to surplus some vehicles from leisure services that are honestly just given out. They have been passed down from other departments and have been used up as best we could, and I'm asking and recommending as a panel that we do accept that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Boone. We'll move on into our agenda for tonight. Our first item is an ordinance to amend city code, chapter 38, article 5, business license and taxes, section 38-303, issue fee. It was held from our December 4th, 2012 meeting, so we have a motion on the floor to accept this ordinance. Move by Councilor Striplin. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Councilor Starnes. Any discussion on this item? All in favor of this ordinance, signified by raising your right hand? Opposed? Ordinance pass, six to one. Second ordinance to surplus various items for scrap metal from wastewater department. Councilor Striplin, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Be it ordained that the city code, chapter 38, article 5, business licenses and taxes, section 38-303, parenthesis three, issue fee is hereby, excuse me, wrong, wrong ordinance. Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Prattville, Alabama as follows, that the items listed on attachment one are hereby declared surplus of the wastewater department and are to be removed from the inventory of said department. Be it further ordained that the city council of the city of Prattville instructs the mayor to sell items as scrap metal and the proceeds be deposited into the wastewater enterprise fund. So moved, Mr. President.
Move by Councilor Striplin. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Brown. This ordinance is of permanent nature. Rules must be suspended unanimously in order to be considered tonight, if we have a motion to suspend rules.
So moved.
Move by Councilor Boone. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Councilor Chambliss. All in favor of suspending the rules, signified by raising your right hand? Rules have been suspended. This ordinance now open for discussion, and be in a discussion on this ordinance. Councilor Striplin.
Yes, sir. Just very briefly, this is basically a cleanup, and these are the items that we have left that we feel like might have some value, sheerly based on their weight, and that's the, the purposes in this process of cleaning up, is to see what we can get for the sale of them.
Any further discussion? All in favor of this ordinance, signified by raising your right hand? Ordinance passes. The third item is an ordinance to surplus two vehicles from the leisure services department. Councilor Boone, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Prattville, Alabama as follows, that the vehicles listed below are hereby declared surplus of the leisure services department and are to be removed from the inventory of said department. 1997 Ford F-350 pickup, VIN 1FTJW35H2VEC05493, and 1998 Chevrolet Lumina, VIN number 2G1WL52M5W9278088. Be it further ordained that the city council instructs the mayor to sell said vehicle through govdeals.com, and that proceeds to be deposited into the general fund. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor for this ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Striplin. Rules must also be suspended on this ordinance. We have a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
Move by Councilor Chambliss. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Brown. All in favor of suspending the rules, signified by raising your right hand? Rules are suspended. Have any discussion on this ordinance? All in favor of this ordinance, signified by raising your right hand? Ordinance passes. Item number four is an ordinance to surplus 12007 Ford 3F, Ford F-350 from the fire department. Councilor Bowles, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Prattville, Alabama as follows, that the vehicle listed below is hereby declared surplus of the fire department and is to be removed from the inventory of said department. The 2007 Ford F-350, VIN number 1FDWF36P27EB48366. Be it further ordained that the city council instructs the mayor to sell said vehicle through govdeals.com, and that the proceeds be deposited into the general fund. I so moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Starnes. This ordinance also must have the rules suspended. We have a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
Move by Councilor Chambliss. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Striplin. All in favor of suspending the rules, signified by raising your right hand? Rules have been suspended. Any discussion on this ordinance? All in favor of this ordinance, signified by raising your right hand? This ordinance passes. Number five is an ordinance to surplus various items from the wastewater department. Councilor Starnes, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Be ordained by the city council of the city of Prattville, Alabama as follows, that the items listed below are hereby declared surplus of the wastewater department and are to be removed from the inventory of said department. Trailer 2.5 ton, single axle, rotor sewer equipment company of America, SN-6130/TRAILER. A trailer SN-06-64268, 1.5 ton, single axle. Trailer 10-foot, double axle dump bed. Auger Blades SN-132510. Little Truck DeHatsow SN-JDA0005800309254. Fisher Scientific Model 307CSN-105N0112. A low blind pump SN-9711001112. A winch, Eskridge Incorporated Model 800582SN-16354, date June 1993. A four-by-trailer, four-by-six trailer with motor slash real motor Honda GX-160136CM3. Nord Gear Limited Rampton SK-42-160, size M/4. SN-971101, horsepower 15.00, RPM 240. Be it further ordained that the city council instructs the mayor to sell said items of govdeals.com, and the proceeds be deposited into the wastewater enterprise fund. So moved, Mr. President.
Do we have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Bowles. This ordinance also would need the rules, rules suspended. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Move by Councilor Boone. We have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Brown. All in favor of suspending the rules? Please raise your right hand. Rules have been suspended. Any discussion on this ordinance? All in favor, signified by raising your right hand? This ordinance passes. Item six is a resolution to authorize the release of funds in an amount not to exceed $13,175 from the, for the purchase of a hot water information management solution, software for the wastewater department. Councilor Striplin, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas there is a need to upgrade the Water Information Management Solution, WIMS, software for the wastewater department, and whereas the cost of said hot WIMS software, including implementation services and web-based training, will not exceed $13,175, and whereas said software is a budgeted expense for the wastewater department. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that funds in the amount not to exceed $13,175, or hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Hatch Company for Water Information Management Solution, WIMS, software. And said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from the fiscal year 2013 budget line item, wastewater enterprise fund capital outlay. So moved, Mr. President.
Do we have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Starnes. Have been a discussion on this item? Councilor Bowles?
Do we have cash to pay for this? Thank you.
Any further discussion? Council Striplin?
The cost goes up in January.
Any further discussion? All in favor of this item, signified by raising your right hand? And this resolution pass. That exhausts our agenda for tonight, but at this time, we have any comments from anyone else in the audience? Will you come up, sir, and state your name for the record, please? Good to see you.
My name is John Paul Adriscoll. I'm with the Tog County Pals, and I have a handout. Again, my name is John Paul Adriscoll with the Tog County Pals, and this is Mr. Donnie Jones, also a member of the Tog County Pals, and I've come here to seek approval for a grant project. This was a proposal that we applied to the Alabama Power Foundation back in July, having coordinated with Mayor Gillespie. It was initially proposed in coordination with the recreational trail grant project that is currently being planned for Pratt Park in, along Togood Creek, and this was, this, this Alabama Power Good Roots Grant Project was proposed to complement that, using grant funds from Alabama Power to plant trees in Pratt Park. And in the document that I gave you, the grant that we received was $1,000 for the benefit of the city, and the proposed actions under the grant project would establish tree cover and beautification along Togood Creek and in Pratt Park, Prattville, Alabama, and also to include tree memorials for residents or businesses to honor loved ones with a tree planted in their name. tree planted in their name. Some of the details in this grant project have been coordinated with Department of Parks and Recreation, Urban Management, and Planning Department, including the trees desired for planting. The labor for this grant project would come from volunteers, and we have tentative interest from multiple civic groups who would participate in the tree planting, and the support that we look to from the city would include planning and approval of tree selection, planting, and other details to the satisfaction of the city. Ground preparation as needed for tree planting and aftercare so the trees will survive. We will also include other inputs from other sources, such as mulch for using around the trees. There is inclusion in this grant proposal to develop the concept of tree memorials, and this maybe, may allow citizens or businesses to pay for the planting of a tree with a marker, and it's something to develop further. But also in the last paragraph on the bottom, the grant money that we, that Alabama Power Foundation has issued does ask for, you know, reasonable effort to be taken to protect, to ensure the trees that are planted would be in good, or protected, so that is included at the bottom. And I do seek your input, but also guidance as to how I should seek your approval on this grant project.
Thank you, Mr. Driscoll, for coming down. First of all, does anyone have any comments or questions concerning this? I think this item is probably an item that needs to go to Leisure Services alone, probably with Urban Management. I don't think it has to have a resolution or anything from this council, that they just need to sit down and discuss all the aspects of this project. We appreciate you bringing them forward, this council, and Ms. Boone and the Leisure Services will get together, I'm sure, at some point, very soon, and discuss this issue. Thank you.
We would also like your input. This should be to your approval, so any input that we get from you, and we'd also, if we get to the point of implementing the project, we would welcome you all coming out and helping with the planting.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Driscoll.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council on any issue? Mayor, do you have any closing comments?
Nelson, just reiterate on what I mentioned earlier, is Merry Christmas. Hope everybody has a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Counselor Striplin.
Very briefly, I too wish the staff and all the citizens of Prattville a very Merry
Counselor Brown.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Starnes.
Yes, I'd just like to wish everyone Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Counselor Chambers.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Bowles.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Boone.
I'd just like to say Merry Christmas to everyone who works for the city. Thank you for all you do. We appreciate it. We see it every day. I don't wake up without seeing something that you've done. I don't get in my car without seeing something that you've done. Thank you very much. Merry Christmas.
Again, as I said, after the mayor's report, I want to thank all the employees and all the volunteers also on various boards and committees throughout the city for what they do for us. We wish you a Merry Christmas, and we pray that everyone will have a safe holiday. Before we leave, we also like to keep in mind that there are people who are hurting and are going through trials at this time, and that you consider them in your prayers also. With that being said, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Have a motion by Counselor Chambers, second by Counselor Bowles. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.